Book Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It's Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. And this meeting is being held by Zoom. And I would like to call this meeting to order. And we will pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which you stand under guidance.
With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Agnes?
Yeah.
Okay. Edward?
Present.
Nick, I'm here. Mayor Kramer?
Here.
NBC? Absent. Tiana Gresham?
Here.
Iris Kizlin?
Here.
And Kevin McNeil?
I'm here.
We have reasonably good attendance. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. I would now like to open this meeting to the public portion, the first public portion. Is there any one of the public who's here?
There appears to be no one from the public present at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public portion of the meeting and move on to the approval of minutes from the previous meeting, which was September 23rd, 2020. I think you've all gotten them in the package. Is there any?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, Kevin, is there a second?
Second. Edward Ward, second.
Edward, thank you. Is there any discussion about the minutes?
I just wanted to mention there was a typo in the minutes. Otherwise, it's fine.
Okay. Is it a substantive typo? Okay.
No, but it, you know. It should be signed instead of whatever was there.
Now, where is it?
On the first, let's see. Oh, dear. If I had it out before, I really.
Is this the word that says to sign up for the library card?
Oh, sing, sing up and sign?
Yeah.
Well, actually, they were supposed to sing.
Oh.
That's not a typo. Okay. Recognizing that a typo will occasionally exist, those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by raising their hand?
Upstayed because I wasn't here.
Anybody opposed to this motion? I would say that, Mayor, have you? No, you did not. Okay. This motion has passed unanimously. Moving along to the Director's Report. January, can you make any comments about first the financial reports and then the program reports?
I have, I have no comments, except that, as you can see, everything seems to be pretty much in line with how it should be, percentage-wise of the budget.
Yeah. I had one question on the hardware systems update. Is that something that's going to be done this year?
We do it every year.
You do it every year?
Yeah.
So the fact that it's at 4% doesn't mean anything?
Doesn't mean anything, no.
Okay, thank you.
That's when we buy new computers and new keyboards. And also, we buy new software. That's all in there.
Okay, and that will come?
That'll, yeah, that'll come.
Sure.
I was looking at 9:55 because I had two sheets for the September 2020. On both sheets. There's a difference between some dollar and some cents. I didn't understand that. 9:55 rent branch and then rent branch on the other sheet of paper. Because I have two sheets of paper.
Oh, yeah.
Did you see that?
Yeah, I see it.
Yes. I don't understand.
I don't know.
Where does the cents and the dollar and the cents come from?
I don't, I have to ask the bookkeeper why it turned out differently. It's only like a dollar.
A dollar some cents, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think it's probably just a typo, but I will double-check on it.
Okay, so January, you're gonna double-check on that and make sure the dollar hasn't floated away somewhere. How about your Director's Report? Would you like to discuss that in any way?
Sure. I'll just tell you that things around the library seem to have leveled off. This seems it's going to be the pattern for some time. Attendance is kind of leveled off. Mostly what people are coming in for is to get some books. When they leave, we are doing a lot of mobile printing. It turns out with the computers that people are mainly interested in using their computers for print jobs. So when they walk in and they, we do have one computer, but there's very low demand for it. And when they come in, they find out that they can do mobile printing. It makes them very happy. And they revert to doing that in the future. Let's see, also, we had 49 virtual programs and we had 248 people, which I think is pretty good for virtual. And you may have noticed that on the second Saturday Book Club, the membership is up. There's 17 members now. And that's, that's up. That's, prior to the pandemic, maybe there were seven, six or seven members. So now it's 17. And the young adult librarian, as usual, is doing lots of stuff, keeping the teens very busy. And the good news is that we have our ILL Delivery Service back as of October 19th. That means people can submit requests for books from other libraries and we can get them. That was not available since the middle of March. And I think that's it.
Thank you. January, are there any questions for January about the report? The reports?
No, just one question. When you say the print, mobile printing, is that they, they send the print request from wherever they're at?
Yes.
Their phone and then?
They come here and pick it up. They pay and pick it up, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you. I have a President's Report. Have you? Any of you had, have any of you had a chance to look at the President's Report that I put out?
Yes.
Yes.
It covers, I guess, four, four areas. I'm not going to read it, but one is the construction grant. The news there is that they still haven't announced who gets the grants, but that they will next week and publish on the webpage. The third mill calculation, I've always been a little in the dark about exactly how that's done. So I've cleared that up, in my mind, anyway. The subdivision application, this is for the land that we're going to buy from the Board of Education. And it seems to be somewhat on track. Although the subdivision application has not been scheduled with the planning board yet, there's no reason why it isn't. According to Vince Dominack, when these things were done, it would be scheduled, but, so I will ask that he proceed with scheduling. And finally, my own, to satisfy my own curiosity about whether we might be impacted by an unhealthy financial situation due to the pandemic. I've been talking to the tax collector, the assessor, the Somerset County Tax Board, and it seems that things are going quite well. August tax payments were even a little better than last year, the rate. And we will be looking at them for the November cycle. Total assessed valuation has gone up. We'll be watching that come early next year when some appeals might change those numbers. In general, I think we're in good financial health and we should be able to proceed with our, the construction of our new Franklin Park Branch building, whether or not we get the grant. That's my opinion.
Will you be monitoring the day when you think it'll be posted? Because you'll see it, we won't see it.
Iris, I check it every day.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Okay. I'll start checking it, too. Is there any correspondence or other communication?
January, I was wondering when you expected it to be posted?
When?
I was wondering when you expected the grant to be posted?
Supposedly, any day now.
Okay, I spoke to Kathleen Pfeiffer today. She is the, she was the facilitator for the committee that has made the selections. They have, they have completed their work, but she is not authorized to give out any information yet. The results should be published sometime next week on the website, So I'm hoping next week, but they keep saying one thing and not doing it.
Well, I'll be having good thoughts. Positive thoughts.
I couldn't hear Kevin.
No, I just said I'll be having positive thoughts about our.
Okay.
Okay, positive thoughts are good. Is there any other communication or correspondence? Seeing none, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
Yes.
Yes, okay. January?
We have the proposed holiday closings for 2021. And what I do is I do every year. I show you the ones that were for this year and the ones that are proposed for 2021.
We've all had a chance, we've all had a chance to look at these. Is there any objection or any comments?
Looks pretty much the same, right?
Yeah, almost. Almost the same.
Speaking without unmuting. So the purpose of closing, I presume, is so that your staff has the day off. Is that right?
Staff gets a set number of holidays, no matter how many times the library is closed. So all those closings are not all days off for the staff. That doesn't make sense. The staff get 14 holidays a year, period.
Okay, so I get it. So example, Christmas weekend, Sunday, December 26th, the library will be closed, but staff members will be required to work?
No, Sunday will be closed. Nobody, nobody will work and nobody will get paid.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, I mean, so the Friday before the Fourth of July is a holiday. Or is it the designated day off? So let's just take the day after Thanksgiving. I'm just being devil's advocate here. I take the day after Thanksgiving off. I take it as a holiday, but but why close the library? Why not have it open? And I'm ready for, open to a really good answer.
Okay, because basically, we have very poor traffic on the Thanksgiving weekend.
Okay.
People, I mean, maybe this, maybe this won't happen this year, but people, a lot of people go away for that long weekend and we just don't have the people coming in.
All right.
Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the schedule? I'm not sure that that's necessary, but.
I make a motion to approve the proposed holiday closings for the calendar year 2021.
I second it.
Is there any further discussion on this proposed holiday closings for 2021? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote of those in favor of the motion, signify by raising their hand. Looks to me to be unanimous in favor. Okay, January, would you like to talk about the other?
Yes.
Uh huh.
And I, and I hope you've all had time to read this.
Yes.
Basically, what I'm proposing is that effective January 1st, the library closes 8 o'clock at night instead of 9 o'clock at night. And that we change Saturdays from a whole Saturday to a half a Saturday. And that we review it again in August to see if we want to change it back or keep it going. And the reasoning behind this is, actually, this is thanks to the pandemic, because we've known anecdotally for a long time that not that many people were coming into the library, but we didn't know exactly the figures. And since the pandemic, and we've got somebody at the front, front door, we count every hour how many people come in. So now we know how many people are coming in. And what I did for the nights was I, I took four months from July to October, averaged it out. And you can see that the busiest night is Tuesday night, where we get 2.6 people. And on Saturdays from those three hours, that was an average of 41.5. And it just seems to me that it's not a really economically good idea to pay staff to sit here and talk to each other when there's no, when there's no patrons coming in. And despite what Nick said, if it turns out later on that we don't have enough money from the town or whatever, that we will have saved some by doing this. And so we'll have some in reserve in case we need it.
So.
One question that I have. I looked, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday is a really low number, but I was just curious, like, how far off is the three-hour span from 2 to 5 as compared to, to, you know, the other hours of Saturday? You know, like, so, so is it average of 41 people from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM? So, and I'm guessing the, the regular hours were from 9 to 5?
Yeah, let me see if I can answer your question. Okay, just looking at October 17th from, okay, so 10, 10 to 11, we had 20 people. 11 to 12, 45. 12 to 1, 26. And 1 to 2, 31.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not off by a lot, but it is off by some.
No, it is, but, but you're talking the average for the three hours. But if you was to take those three hours, you know, like, say, from 9 to, to 1, it would be a lot more than these averages. That's what I was, one, it seems like it, right? Because you was breaking it down hour by hour. So if you took all three hours, it would be, you know, maybe 150 people as opposed to 32 or 51 for the last three hours. Am I getting that right or am I?
I'm not quite sure I understood your question. There's more people, more people coming in the morning.
More people coming in the morning, right? So I was wondering, so like, we did a three-hour average, right? From, from 2 to 5.
Right.
So I was, I was wondering how much that average was for any other three-hour period during, during the, during that same time? You know, so from Saturday, if you took an average number of people, say, on, on October 27th, from like 9 to 1, the average number would, would be significantly more than 51?
Yes.
From the numbers, because I, you said from 9 to 11? From 9, from 10 to 2?
10 to 2.
Okay.
So that's four hours.
So from 10 to 2 is, like, that's four hours. But I mean, it would, you know,
You want to take three hours?
The average num, no, even if you do the four hours, like, would, would be the average number of people?
That would be, let's see, well. It will be 100, it's 112 for the four hours, right?
Okay. Right, so, so for the average, so still the average doesn't matter, three or four hours. So you're right, so it's like half the people after, the average is half the people for those three hours as opposed to the four hours before it. Okay, I was just wondering what the difference was in the last three hours of the day or the average of the people that came in the last three hours of the day? So to me, I guess it does make sense to.
The other thing is that if we find that this is not working out well, we can always, we can always change it. We can change it within like a one or two-week period, just back to full day.
So might I suggest that you advertise it with a sign and place an email address for people to leave comment? Do that for the next month and then we can decide who can look at those comments?
Good.
Okay.
I, I think that, my own opinion is that January and her staff have done a reasonable study and come up, came up with a conclusion that frankly, I agree with, so.
I understand, I understand that, but getting input from your patrons as how much they, I mean, I can see the eight to nine. You know, it's, it's a right.
Yeah, I definitely see that.
Yeah, the Saturday is not as strong a case. And I will, I mean, I'll be happy to do this, but I will, generally, what happens with this kind of a thing is they ask people if they want it, they say yes.
Yeah.
Then they don't use it. But I can do it.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that if we get 20 people saying, no, I don't like it, then we decide to go with them because 20 out of 70,000 people is a small number. But what's, I've forgotten, you've addressed this. What's our usership now compared to non-pandemic times?
Overall, it's maybe a third of what it was, let's see. Let's see, well, if you look at last year's visitors, it was 17,181. And this year, it was 3,195. That's for the whole nun. So it's.
The Director's Report has some of these figures in it on next to the last, on the last page.
It's down by 81%.
Yeah.
So these numbers, we can multiply by five in non-pandemic times. I don't know if that's valid, but. All right, that's my comments.
So I have just two questions. The time period will be effective January 1st, 2021, until what time? Will we revisit in August?
August, yeah.
Okay, and during, during that time, we should have, hopefully, we have a vaccine and we should be coming out of the pandemic. My second question is, the Franklin Park Branch, Monday hours is 2:30 to 9:00 PM. Do you plan to reduce that hours by one as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm done, thank you.
So are we gonna?
Is there a motion to approve this plan?
Well, I thought you wanted to contingent on doing the survey.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Going to table it.
That was a suggestion from a non-voting member. So you guys have to deal with that, either table it or or could that, you could have a motion and you could pass it parliamentally.
I, I would think that you need, you'd have to give yourself a certain time before you make a decision as to how long you want to wait till you get the answer. I, no.
So is the concern on the Saturday hours or the weekday?
No, not the Saturday.
It was more the Saturday hours.
Saturday.
Yeah, the Saturday.
As a Saturday. So I think we should split the proposal into two and agree that we can move forward with changing the weekday hours from 8 to 9 and then further table the Saturday hours under further discussion.
Okay, that's okay with me.
Agreed.
Is there a second to that stated motion?
I second it.
Yeah, I second it.
Any further discussion on that part of the motion? On that motion?
No.
Seeing none? Those in favor of Mr. Ward's motion, please signify by raising your hand.
All right.
I think that's pretty unanimous, that's unanimous.
Who made the second?
Iris.
Iris.
Agnes. Okay. Is there any other new business?
Um, I have a pleasant review from my senior club members that use the library. They were really happy for the hours and the time they go in. They, they told me that those who use the library to get books, mostly, most of them go to get books. They said their time of waiting is very short and they are well-received. And everything goes on nicely. So I was really pleased to hear that from the seniors who use the library during this pandemic time. So kudos to you, January.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you. That is good, good to hear.
Yes, to you, January, and to your entire staff.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I'd like to open the second public portion of the public meeting. Has anyone of the public come on yet?
There has been no one from the public on.
Okay, so I will close the second part of the public portion. I would like to confirm that our next meeting date will be November 18th, 2020. And as far as I know, it will also be a virtual meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
And Mayor Kramer, yeah, that was a beautiful picture of you at the pool, putting your ballot in the box. That was a nice picture. He was posing, putting the ballot in the box.
Who's picture, Mayor Kramer?
Yes, Mayor Kramer.
Let me just say very quickly about voting, just as another way to get it out to the public. So um, I voted by putting it in the drop box. I considered that very safe. You can still mail uh, your ballot and uh, you may have heard in Wisconsin that they're not going to accept uh, ballots that have been mailed on time but don't arrive on time. Uh, that is
Terrible.
videosyncracy of what's going on in Wisconsin. If you mail it on time in New Jersey, as long as it's received within ten days after the election day, it will still count. Um, on election day, there's um, here's, here's the ways you can vote. You can mail your ballot. You can put your ballot in a drop box. You can bring your ballot to a polling location and give it to the um, the people working at the polls. You should go to your polling location, the one, and your polling location may not be the same as it always has been. Um, but if you can't find your polling location this year, any polling location in a storm will do. You can hand it in anywhere. You could also uh, put it in any drop box in Somerset County. You put it in Middlesex County's drop box, it's not going to work, but any drop box in Somerset County. So um, you cannot, unless you are handicapped in a way that prevents you from using a mail-in ballot or a provisional ballot, you cannot vote using a machine. So you show up there without your ballot and you go to use a machine, unless you are willing to swear an affidavit that you are um, handicapped in a way that you cannot use a, a paper ballot, then they will not let you use a machine and you will sign that under penalty of law. If you've lost your uh, ballot, you can go to a polling station and get a provisional ballot and they look exactly the same, oh, I shouldn't say exactly, very close to a regular uh, mail-in ballot. You could also call the clerk's office and get another um, mail-in ballot sent to you. And just for those of you who are concerned about cheating, get, if you have your ballot and then you order another one and get it, they're only going to count it once. There are, there are methods that they are using to prevent it from happening twice. And if you do try to vote twice, you will get a call from the prosecuting attorney. Uh, you know, maybe you've got a good reason why you did that, but you will get a call from the prosecuting attorney. And I don't like calls from the prosecuting attorney. All right.
I don't think so. I have one question and one comment. The first, the question, uh, Mayor Kramer is, are the provisional uh, ballots counted like the, like a regular ballot or?
They are counted after the mail-in ballots are received and the, or after the ten days that we wait for the mail-in ballots. The reason is because they want to, they don't want someone voting twice. So they want to see which mail-in ballots have come in, and then they will only count provisional ballots for people who have not nailed uh, in. But they are all out, they're not just counted if it's going to, you know, if like, there's a hundred provisional ballots and the difference is a hundred and fifty of, between the two closest races, they're not going to say, ah, we don't need to count them.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
It's not close enough. They will count all the ballots.
And the comment that I was making is that I also found out, I already voted and, and put mine in the drop box in Somerville and there, I, I was able to go online and track my ballot to make sure that um, the ballot was received and that it was accepted and um, I don't know, unfortunately, I forgot how I did it, but I guess I went to the, I went to the um, to the uh, the, the website of the Board of Elections, and I just followed the directions. So I guess if anybody wants to, who've already voted, wants to track their ballot and make sure that it was received and, and uh, accepted, um, I, I just found it reassuring in the climate that we're living in and now that uh, my ballot, uh, I know that it was accepted and, and received and will be counted.
So if you want to find out how to do that, go to mayorkramer.com, mayorkramer.com. At the top, you're going to see a bunch of red links. Um, and the second to last one is click here to register to see if your ballot has been received. Below that is the link, where do I vote? Above that is a link on Vote by Mail video, which explains how to fill out your um, your ballot. I want everyone to vote. Yes, I have, I'm affiliated with a certain party, but I want everyone to vote, not just my party.
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everyone. Are we adjourned?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, sorry.
I have motion to adjourn the meeting?
Kevin moved to adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded?
Yeah.
Somebody, Agnes seconded those in favor.
Hi.
It's unanimous, we are adjourned, and our next meeting, as I mentioned, is November eighteenth.
All right.
See you guys.
Good luck to everyone. Stay, stay healthy.
Bye. That's the main thing.